...to issuance of such installment purchases, refunding revenue bonds on the aggravated principal amount of not exceeding twenty-five million, delegating the authority to the county supervisor and chair of county council to approve and determine certain matters and other matters related. This one is in consideration of the 2010 I R I P R B bond, which is actually known as the Build America Bond. Again, it's for us to get it at a lower interest rate, and we have a potential savings on that one between forty-eight thousand to a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars annually. I need a motion.
We have second reading. Second.
Moved and properly second reading of ordinance two zero two dash zero two. Any discussion? All those in favor, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, no. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Our next order of business is for first reading of ordinance two zero two zero dash zero three. It's an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Project Good Earth, providing for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Mr. Jensen.
Good evening, Madam Supervisor, members of council. I'm really a give a broader explanation of this ordinance because it also ties in with the resolution for of the inducement resolution, which is item two under resolutions. But what this is, is a ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between the county and Project Good Earth for a fee in lieu. Now, this does not set the fee in lieu at this time. In third reading, we will have an extensive review of the fee in lieu because it should be extensive. Y'all sitting there saying, what is Project Good Earth? The resolution authorizing and inducing the parties to enter into this fee in lieu is between the county and Project Good Earth. Project Good Earth represents that they intend to invest sixty-two million dollars in Williamsburg County. Sixty-two million dollars or is it?
We'll go into the accelerator.
I can't go into any more details other than to tell you it is a submitted project. No more details other than we say we this inducement says, come to the table, we will consider this project and we will negotiate in good faith on a fee in lieu of the county. That's all. So that's what's before you tonight, the first reading, and then I'll answer any further questions about the inducement resolution.
But we not committing any project by entering this resolution.
You only say, we in good faith will negotiate. This is an inducement resolution. This is not binding. The only time this could be binding is when we enter into an ordinance and a fee in lieu agreement at some time in the immediate future, at which time you will have bond counsel here, you can have numbers here, you can have full disclosure here and those kind of things. You're not, this is just information basically at this time. And we're, and it puts it out there that, yep, we got somebody, this is, we're interested in coming here, we don't have any more specifics than that, and they're talking about a sixty-two million dollar fee in lieu agreement. Not aware of us ever entering into one of that size except for the one.
We will, we will be a little more well-versed before we begin a decision.
Before you make any binding decisions, you will be better than well-versed. You'll have a good understanding of what we're going to be doing, numbers, everything for a fee mechanic, ability. This is just, this is just to say, we're coming, and it's an okay, please, go forward and negotiate with us. This is set the table. No agreement.
I'm just a little bit reluctant to enter into something. I don't even know what it is. That's my only thing. I mean, we'll talk to any, I'll be glad to talk to anybody about any project that's worth sixty-two million dollars, but I'm curious to know what it is.
We have an executive session discussion in reference to that because of the nature of what we're doing here, so you can ask those questions in the executive session.
So we'd be able to do this after any question?
First reading.
Yeah, yeah. During third reading and before third reading, you will have all this information. So when you do decide to have third reading, you satisfied and prepared to enter into a fee in lieu. That will only be at that time of and follow up to third reading. And that third reading may not necessarily come next month. It may be for checking, for tracking out based on negotiation with the board. Sometimes this fee needs take six months. There's no timeframe here other than third reading. Any other question?
Any other questions for the attorney of the three? Okay. We have a motion for first reading of ordinance two zero two zero dash zero three, Title One. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Project Good Earth, providing for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto.
Motion for first reading, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Moving on to resolutions, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero one. A resolution authorizing Williamsburg County to enter into a lease agreement with Muddy Creek. Move your motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Explain a little bit about that, to enter into what kind of agreement with Muddy Creek.
Well, as most of you know, that Muddy Creek's lease agreement had become outdated, I should say, it expired. And Mr. Lee was very interested in doing another lease agreement for the Muddy Creek facility, and it's basically between Williamsburg County and the school district.
Let me mention two, and I think if we were doing two, if you're saying, we're also doing one at Gatter Park, which has got some work that was done on it. And look, I had a provision, and I think it was, I see it, I didn't see it when I was looking at this thing, in paragraph four, if, I think I had sort of a stop-loss provision put in there, and I would ask you, put it with that in there. We agreed to be doing repairs to the building up to five hundred dollars, but if it exceeds five hundred dollars, then we have a right to terminate the lease, renegotiate those repairs. And in other words, it caps our liability to repair and fulfill. I think that was a concern. We don't want to say five, we're leasing off, suddenly we've got to spend thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars fixing us, and we don't have the money, and then we would be in default at least, so it would be a stop-loss provision inserted of five hundred dollars, where we can say, well, we want to do this a lot. It will, you know, it would be taking care of the unknown at the root. It doesn't mean that we won't do it. It means that we have an option not to do it, should that be the case. In other words, it may be the school district responsible, five hundred dollars responsible.
Okay, but I'm not familiar with even the Muddy Creek area. I'm really not familiar with it. Were you talking about a lease for the building down at Muddy Creek or what?
Anyway, Muddy Creek facility is a building with some playground and granite, but it's also a community building, you know that? Am I right? I've never seen it. I'm just going by what I heard. This is like five year, rolling five years, in other words, we have a right to do it for five more and then five more after that.
So we currently have a lease with them, or is that expired?
It's expired.
Yes.
How is it, it's expired, the old is expired.
Let me say, enter into a lease, which means that we are now on take responsibility for maintenance on that building or that facility?
Up to five hundred dollars is what I want to put that provision back in to do what's not in there. It would be a stop-loss on any maintenance of five hundred dollars. If it's, if it comes in and somebody, it may be a seven hundred dollar item, we have an option of saying, yeah, we're going to do it, and not, not going to do it.
So does that mean a one-time thing of five hundred, or can it be a reoccurring five hundred?
It's a reoccurring five hundred.
So basically, we are responsible for maintaining and cleaning grass cuts and so on and so forth. How do we deal with that?
But now, just to go back to the budget now, if we go back to the budget, we didn't have money back then to do that. So, I mean, I don't see us going back now and creating a situation where we was in a situation and we were even talking about the fee that we was going, imposed on the citizen and they didn't want it, and we went back and we was, there was a scenario there where we was going to lay off the employees, and then eventually there was, we was able to get ourselves out of something where we had to really cut some area. I don't, I don't see that being a good idea at this point. I really don't.
And you also mentioned something about community building. When you explained to us just now, you said something, you used the word community. Is it going to be a county facility or a community facility?
This facility is relatively small in acreage. I think it's five acres.
Four.
Four acres. And on that four acres is a community center and a ballpark, I think, and some small recreational facilities. The community uses the facility as one of our facilities that we, we use, and consequently we're, this lease expires several years ago. The citizens of that area came to him, he asked me to draft and present it to you, and that's what I did just now.
Okay, let me ask you this, when, when the community rent that community building, we're paying the maintenance and so forth, up to five hundred dollars, you say it could be reoccurring. What did the county get? Do we have access to, to recoup or to get those rental fees?
Yeah. County could rent it. And we would have complete control of the facility, and how we handle that is the county policy. The school district would not get any rental. They, they basically given it to the county for purposes set forth in the lease. As long as we use it and occupy it as a community building slash recreational park, they, they say, yeah, you can have it, do whatever you want to do with it. But we, I was suggesting that the old lease, I did not draw. That was drawn by some recreation department deal years ago, and every sudden, when I saw it, it made the county liable for the maintenance and upkeep of that building, and I said, I don't think we need to do that, we need to put a cap on it for a bit, and I'm just suggesting that if you say, no cap, we not doing, we want to enter into it, but we don't pay anything, if you want to say five hundred dollars, that's not, if you want to say two hundred dollars, that's not. But it would not be, you say reoccurring, let me give you an idea. Plumbing gets stopped up. You call a plumber, she comes and spends two hundred dollars on plumbing, or set tank needs to be, thing that. That would be our responsibility to pay those costs, cut the grass. As close as they said, but hey, we want to pay around the rivers and the zoos and do something, cost five hundred dollars. They want to come in and say, we want to put new funds, it will cost ten thousand dollars. You say.
But then, what you're saying, they can do it, you said reoccurring, so they can do it incrementally, incrementally, or you didn't say five hundred dollars cap per year, you just say incrementally, a reoccurring.
I could put, you could put a per year on it, put a cap on it. What I had in mind was this, if they keep me in with five things that needed to be done, you couldn't get more than five hundred dollars. But if you had one thing, two hundred dollars, and then six months later, somebody broke some windows out and had to replace them, that would be a second ice.
We need to fine tune that bill because they come in, in January with a four hundred and fifty dollar bill, then in March, they come with another bill for a hundred and thirty, then in July, they come another, sit down, that's still in the same year, and you said reoccurring, so we would have spent about eight hundred dollars already, so maybe we need to do it annually.
And, and one of my suggestions is, if the council wants to say five hundred dollars per year, period, you can say that. If you want to say two hundred dollars per year, period, you can say that. If you want to say no, no, no expenses, period, not, you can say that. The school district plan may not sign, that's it. Again, we have not done any active negotiation with the school district. The only negotiation right now is with cap to see what they want to do.
Madam Supervisor, I think that we should really, before we take on any new expenses this year, we need to sit down and talk this thing out, because I think we need to tailor this until such time as we have an opportunity to go over, look at all the possibilities that may happen, and not only this building with any new projects coming in, we have to take.
We've got a motion on the floor, don't we?
Any discussion?
We've got a motion and a second, right?
No.
We have a motion and a second and discussion, and discussion.
Discussion. Well, I, I just want to say, I kind of concur, because remember, we said our ultimate goal this year was to try to see if every and any place that we can, and I think if we, all right.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, sir.
What, what, what you, what you asking? Do you have?
What you asking? Five hundred, five hundred dollars annually, or take it all out? How, how do you see with the fee down there at the five hundred dollars? I think, I think the community, I don't hold against the community having a place to, to have like the recreation or something like that. I can go along with the price that you cap that you putting on there, and, but I, I just hate to just see that you not to do nothing for the community, and they are taxpayers also. That's, that's my feeling.
We can do like the list, like, like Mr. Jensen drew up with the, with the five hundred dollars. I mean, that's, that's, so, we just want to get in the building and use it. The community just wants to get in the building and use it. They pay the rental fee, whatever the county says, and they send it up here, and I think it's been going to the recreation department. But, but it's, but, but they hadn't had one in a good while, and I don't know who let the lease run out, but anyway, it's out, and we're trying to get it back started, we're trying to get in there. We're trying to get them to let them use the, the building. That's all it is. It's no hidden purpose, it's no hidden agenda.
I think all we're saying, just is we need to discuss it, something, see all the pros and cons. We don't know, this is front time, we ain't hearing anything about this, so I don't see any harm with us discussing it before we go any further with this. If it was in my district, I would say the same thing. I would have no problem with us as a group discussing it, see if this, if this is the best thing for us to do for the county.
Okay. Any other discussion?
None.
Hearing none? All those in favor, favor, all those in favor of approving the resolution, the resolution for twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty zero one resolution, please signify by saying aye.
If it's approved, that's could be with a cap, if it's like one for that cap.
If it's approved, I would go with the cap.
Then you have to insert, you have to insert what you want to say differently.
Five hundred dollars per year.
Yes.
Okay, so we need to, there need to be another motion made, just want to insert.
I would make, take the vote based upon approval of the resolution providing the leases amended for five hundred dollars here with the cap on it.
Okay. Did I hear that?
Yeah, I mean.
All right.
Show them.
Second.
Does everybody, hold on. Does everybody understand that, what you just said? Okay.
We are amended.
All right, we amend it, and with the cap on it, that would be your insert. Five hundred dollar cap per year.
Yeah, per year.
And so, Mr. Jensen, you're, what you're saying, I, I just read this lease, since we've been sitting here, and it's, it's a standard lease, because you're just saying you're just going to add a cap to it, an annual cap of five hundred dollars, not a residual cap of five hundred dollars, it'd just be done annually.
It had it in it, but when we, when we printed the two, we didn't have it, didn't have it. Well, look, it's supposed to have a five hundred dollar cap.
Okay. All those in favor of amending the main motion and taking out or inserting the word annually, please, annually, the fee of five hundred dollars annually, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. So ordered. All right. Moving on to resolution number two zero two zero dash zero two. And that is what Mr. Jensen just basically went over with us, an inducement resolution providing for a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Williamsburg County and Project Good Earth. Need a motion?
Motion. That's my motion. Second.
Motion, properly second, any discussion? All those in favor of, of resolution two zero two zero dash zero two, an inducement resolution providing for a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Williamsburg County and Project Good Earth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, no. The ayes have it. Our next area is under the supervisor's report, and that is, this had, this public notice was issued back in January eighth, and it was sent out to the public for information only regarding some grants that the county is in pursuit of. We are pursuit of several grants. One is for the African American Museum Annex Project. The other is for the Williamsburg County Fire Department Generator Project, as well as the Williamsburg County Solid Waste Project, will provide immediate funds for eleven attended office, office buildings, and the fourth, the Williamsburg County Solid Waste Management Project Two, in support of the stationary compactors for the various areas throughout the county. And the Williamsburg County Fire Department is also a then six generator projects with inflatable light towers, and it is in conjunctions with Rural Development and PD Health Coalition, so it's just an FYI, we are in pursuit of those grants, and the public notice was issued for those. The second thing on the supervisor's report is, I'd just like to take this opportunity to say, to send a big shout out to the Music Festival Committee, members and volunteers and the participants for an awesome job in putting on the Mo Time Review that was held last Sunday. It was truly a great time, so if I'd like this chance to give a round of applause for their efforts. Moving along, is an appearance by Ms. Janet Hicks. Come to the podium.
I noticed here that this says it's limited to three minutes, so I'll be reading quickly. So some of you here already know me, I'm Janet Hicks. I wanted to take a minute to introduce myself and to outline kind of the scope of the engagement that I have with the county supervisor and the county for some work that I'm doing at the Transit Authority. I've been in public accounting for thirty-five years. I have both my CPA and CBA designation, as well as specialties in forensic accounting, fraud analysis, and litigation support. I've assisted attorneys throughout the state in civil matters, and have assisted both local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies in criminal matters. I've been qualified as an expert to give testimony in the courts of South Carolina. The engagement that I was asked to work for in the county began back in August of last year, and at present is still going on, which is why you do not have a formal report tonight that been asked to give some preliminary findings. This engagement stemmed from the Department of Labor Audit that resulted in the payout of hundreds of thousands of dollars to employees of the Transit Authority. I had hoped that our engagement could be completed quickly. However, due to a straddle and an atmosphere of secrecy on cooperation by the staff and the lack of proper records, this has been by far one of the most difficult engagements that I've worked on. My staff and I have been forced to gather information through tactics that took a lot more time and effort than they should have, and at a cost to the county in doing so. I'll use a phrase that most of us are familiar with here. It's kind of like liver. The more I chewed it, the bigger it got. And it seemed that with each question that was asked by us, that was then not completely and concisely answered, caused us to have to dig and dig more, the more we dove, the more we found. Having said all this, let me outline what our engagement, what the scope of our engagement was. Number one, we were to review the general ledger accounts, the checks, the deposits, and various monetary relationships handled by Williamsburg County Transit Authority for the timeframe of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Then, number two, we were to provide a report to the current county administrator, supervisor, showing questionable expenditures, deposits, postings, or relationships. As my staff and I proceeded with this engagement, we immediately found questionable reimbursements that had been given to Mr. Michael Burgess and Diana White that did not have proper documentation or authorization as outlined by county policy. The answer given to us by the staff was that that was the way we were told to do it, or we weren't asked to show proper documentation. Those responses only helped to confirm my suspicion that the Transit Authority had kind of been acting on its own without oversight from the county administration, almost as if it was conducting itself as an autonomous entity outside the guidelines and procedures of county administration. Furthermore, or for example, when given, when, when I asked the IT department of the county to come over and help me with some computer issues, I found that the Transit Authority has a, an exclusive relationship with an IT that has nothing to do with your county. We couldn't, the county IT department couldn't get into the computer records that I needed to conduct this forensic audit. We had to call in the consultants that were engaged or were, that represented the, the contract that they had with, with Williamsburg County Transit. It's apparent that the Transit Authority, in our, in what we found, that the county, that the Transit Authority was not following county policy in many instances, which to me is problematic since every county agency should be abiding by the county administrator, the supervisor, and the policy set by this council. This led us to look into records such as cell phones, I'm going to give you a few examples, cell phones and tablets. We uncovered that there were several cell phones that the county Transit Authority was paying monthly fees for, that were, these cell phones were unaccounted for, and they were found to be in the possession of people who were not employed by the Transit Authority. This specific incident was the first indication that upper management at Transit Authority was not willing to divulge information to me freely, that we later then had to dig to find and prove this information that was readily known by many of the staff. As we proceeded, we found ser- serious internal control issues with respect to inventory, payroll, time management, asset procurement, asset custody, fringe benefits, reimbursement policies, segregation of duties, just to name a few. In other words, the lack of internal control and oversight is systemic throughout this agency. For me to go into each and every issue tonight would take too much time to cancel from this meeting tonight. Therefore, by this report, I will outline just a few areas. Number one, improper inter, improper payroll records and timekeeping. There had been allowed, and I have proven that employees had been allowed to ride the clock, and to be paid for time that they were not actually working. This was allowed, I sampled, and I found one particular driver in, in particular, that was not only being paid an astronomical amount of overtime, but also received a significant back pay in this labor audit. Number two, improper inventory records. There had been allowed, and I have proven that there is inventory that is unaccounted for. Not only is this inventory unaccounted for, but the audited financial statements that were issued are therefore incorrect, because as a result of the inaccurate inventory reports that were provided to the auditor. Improper protection and custody of assets. There had been allowed, and I have proven that there have been assets that have been sold by the Transit Authority Executive Director that did not go through the proper sale policy set forth by the county. This includes the sale of one particular vehicle that occurred during my engagement, or during the timeframe that I looked at. or during the timeframe that I looked at. It also includes the discovery of several tags that have not been deactivated with the Department of Transportation. You and I know that you have to turn a tag in. If there's not, if you don't turn the tag in, there could be a fine for up to $350 per tag for not turning the tag in. We found dozens. This could lead to, could lead to substantial fines being, being imposed by the power department. The purchase and sale of assets, vehicles in particular, have not been properly recorded in the financial records of Transit Authority. Therefore, again, the audited financial statements show incorrect asset figures. Improper fringe, number four, improper fringe benefits. There had been allowed, and I have proven that gift cards that ranged in values from $50 to $500 that totaled in excess of $10,000 were purchased by Transit Authority, and now over half of those gift cards are unaccounted for. This is a violation of county policy and also a violation of IRS rules on compensation and benefits. Therefore, there has been improper reporting of payroll and payroll taxes by this agency. Number five, improper reimbursement for meals and travel, et cetera. There has been allowed, or had been allowed, and I have proven that reimbursements were given to both Michael Burgess and Diana White that did not contain proper approval or substantiating documentation. Number six, during my time at Transit, although this was not outlined in the engagement, I have, over the past five months that I've been there, me and my staff have provided informal recommendations to upper management at Transit Authority and to the current county supervisor about ways to fix some of these internal control deficiencies. However, I would recommend to council that a complete review of policies and procedures be addressed by council and the county supervisor. Number seven, most importantly, and the issue that raised the most, raises the most concern to me is the lack of oversight that has been allowed, that was allowed by the former county supervisor and the Transportation Advisory Board and the county council in respect to the financial affairs of the Transit Authority and its executive director. I find that both the former county supervisor and the Transit Advisory, Advisory Board have been somewhat derelict in their duties and responsibility to you, your council members, and to the citizens of Williamsburg County for not requiring this agency and its executive director to comply with and follow the policies set forth by county administration. I cannot attest as to why this has occurred. I do know that I was asked by the current county supervisor to give some guidance and to look at this timeframe, and then we would determine whether or not we would extend this engagement to a further timeframe. That'll be left up to you or to the current supervisor to determine whether, how much more we want to go into this. But I think in my report tonight, it's evident that there's a problem. There's an internal control problem, and there is an oversight problem. My suggestion would be that the county council addresses, addresses that. I don't know what else, a, a further forensic review might uncover. In our prayer that, that we opened with, let's don't look back at the past. Let's look forward and figure out a way to fix this. And I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Me members of council have any questions?
Ma'am, excuse me?
Yes.
You, you highlighted, you highlighted quite a bit tonight for a 90% of which I was unaware. When would be a time that the council could meet with you and get more? You were vague with a lot of your stuff. When can we meet with you for you to be a little more specific and let us know exactly what's what? And if we had to face this, we need to know all about what happened in the past, so we won't repeat it. So I would like to, I know you're busy right now, but if you can set aside some time, perhaps maybe council could meet with you to ask you some specific questions, because I have several.
I'll wait at the leisure room, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think that was my question also. And when would we be able to get a hard copy of that report so that, you know, we would have for our records? As, as you said, so that we wouldn't make those same mistakes?
Our engagement would be, would be amended to adopt the cost needed to put it in a, in a written report. I was asked to give an oral report and gather information, which I have done, most of which is, you know, ready to just be duplicated and handed to you guys. So I'll do that at the leisure room, council.
Also, I'd just like to add that Ms. Janet will be continuing her investigation throughout the rest of the county government offices. She will be in, next place she will be going into drug and alcohol. Then she will be in various other areas, grants, economic development, et cetera, et cetera, to include the general fund during my time. A forensic audit will be conducted during my tenure, my entire tenure, or reviewed for the citizens. This is not the only area we're coming in. We're gonna make sure we hit every department that are, that's under my leadership. Any questions? Hearing none, thank you, statesman. The next item is the, for executive, for us to go into executive session. And executive session in accordance with 30-4-70A, by discussion, to discuss an economic development matter concerning Project Good Earth. Need a motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of us going into executive session, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. The ayes have it.